We'll call a regular meeting in the New Ulm City Council for May 16, 2017, 4:30 PM. Order. First item on the agenda is your consent agenda items. What's your wishes on them?
I'll offer a motion to approve those.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items. Any discussion on any?
Our just our logic tax really still seems to be coming about 3,000 a month higher than projections, so. Alright, that's a good sign. We got people coming to town.
Anybody else? Nothing? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. At this time, we'll change the agenda, so we need a motion, I guess, to do that. And we're gonna go to number 6A, B, and F, so if we have a motion to amend the agenda.
I'll move it.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Okay. Now, we're gonna go to item 6A. Consider motion accepting the Minnesota Recreation Park Association Award. Tom Schmitz?
Thank you, President Schmitz, and councilors. We have with us Michelle Snyder from the Twin Cities. She's Executive Director of the Minnesota Recreation and Parks Association. Michelle?
Thank you, Director Schmitz. President Schmitz and council members, thank you for inviting me here today to present the Minnesota Recreation and Park Association Award of Excellence to you and your New Ulm Parks and Recreation staff. A brief history about us. Minnesota Recreation and Park Association, or MRPA, we were formed 80 years ago, in 1937. We are a nonprofit, membership-based organization representing the parks and recreation industry in Minnesota. Currently, there are approximately 900 members across the state, and they represent municipal, county, state, special park district, and corporate agencies. The MRPA Awards Committee represents a cross-section of our association members. The committee administers our MRPA Award of Excellence program, which is an annual program created to recognize agencies and their staff for outstanding projects, such as your Herman Heights Inclusive Playground project. That was either implemented or received substantial renovations in the preceding year. MRPA members may nominate a project in one of seven categories. Administrative or management strategies, communications, park and facilities, programming and events, sponsorships and partnerships, and this was the category in which your award was nominated, sustainability, and volunteer initiatives. This is a competitive process, so nominations are reviewed, evaluated, and scored by our awards committee. Only the top-scoring nominations receive the Award of Excellence distinction. On behalf of Minnesota Recreation and Park Association, our Board of Directors, and our nearly 900 members across the state, we are honored to present to the city of New Ulm and your Parks and Recreation Department the MRPA Award of Excellence for your Herman Heights Inclusive Playground project. May I please call forward your Parks and Recreation staff to receive this award.
Thank you for coming down here today. This was a really fun project that we worked on back then with all the volunteers that came out of the woodwork to make this project happen. And Cheryl, I know you nominated us, so thank you for doing that. This really was a community project for a park that is very popular. It was popular even before, now it's even more popular. My granddaughter's favorite park. So, thank you again for that award. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Very deserving.
And I just want to also thank the Medical Center Foundation, who is well-represented here tonight for their donation to the city and all the work that they did on the project in terms of not just the funding, but the designing, the helping with the volunteers, and all of the other behind-the-scenes work. I know Councilor Mack took a day off, and he helped. And it's a great partnership also with M&amp;R Paving and Fastenal, and all the other partners and businesses in the New Ulm community who supported the project, so thank you.
It really is a community park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One thing I'd like to add before the motion is made. I know the New Ulm Medical Center played a big part in it, but also some of the other sponsorships and partners were, again, New Ulm Park and Rec, Public Works, Engineering Departments, New Ulm Medical Center, but also M&amp;R Paving, Fastenal, the Archery Trade Association, Creative Partners, Flagship Recreation, Medical Center, again, Courage Kenny Rehabilitation Institute, District 88, Early Childhood Parents and Children. All of those organizations, well-deserved.
Right. And that's, the city departments are to be commended to, especially Engineering and Public Works, who did a lot of work on the project that we, you know, if we would have had to outsource, that would have cost us extra dollars, too. So, we really appreciate their help. I know the Public Works is always willing to help us out with those parts, that aspect of our projects. When we have, when we put in playgrounds, they're always there to help us, you know, with the equipment, and their staff are great to work with. And Engineering as well, who did all the survey work for us, so. Thank you.
Very busy park.
Thank you. Entertainer motion, or somebody else have anything they'd like to say? If they're finished, I'll make a motion to accept the 2016 Award of Excellence from the Minnesota Recreation and Parks Association for the Herman Heights Inclusive Playground project in the partnerships and sponsorships category.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. And again, thank you, everybody. Item 6B. Consider a motion to accept bronze-level designation as Bike Friendly Community.
We're just popular today.
Did you name an address for the record, please?
I will. Council President Schmitz, Mayor Boisman, my name is Dorian Greeley. I work for the Bicycle Alliance of Minnesota, and I'm used to the formality. I came straight here from the Capitol, so.
I'm not quite that formal.
Yeah. I'm here on behalf of the League of American Bicyclists to congratulate you on the Bronze Bike Friendly Community ranking that you received last week. The League of American Bicyclists is America's oldest bicycle advocacy organization. Founded in 1880, they are leading the movement to create a more bicycle-friendly America. The Bicycle Alliance of Minnesota is a statewide advocacy organization that partners with the League of American Bicyclists, MINDOT, the Minnesota Department of Health, Explore Minnesota Tourism, and many others, to use the Bike Friendly America program to encourage efforts to make bicycling and walking in our states and its communities easy and safe. You were ranked on five, what the League of American Bicyclists call the five Es: engineering, education, enforcement, encouragement, and evaluation and planning. So, you received a positive ranking in all those areas, and last week, you joined 415 other communities in the United States and 20 others in Minnesota that have achieved a Bike Friendly Community ranking. Minnesota also has 84 bicycle-friendly businesses, including some of our corporate giants like General Mills, 3M, Target, and IBM in Rochester. So, it is, it's a popular program that lots of people are getting the message about. And the Bicycle Alliance believes that when more people ride bikes, everyone's life is better. And for us, it's all about people, places, and policy. It's about empowering people through initiatives like the Heart of New Ulm, and it's about shaping policy at all levels and empowering advocates to work with their communities and the state and the counties to make places more bike-friendly. Bike MN, the Bicycle Alliance, works very closely with the American Heart Association, the Minnesotans for Healthy Kids Coalition, and several others. And we're the ones that created the Minnesota Mayoral Active Transportation Caucus. And thanks, Mayor Boisman, for joining. There are about 60 mayors around Minnesota, and the messages of the caucus are simple ones. Bicycling and walking needs to be part of the transportation funding bill because it's part of a multimodal transportation system in Minnesota. And good walking and bicycling are important parts of the livability of a community and the sustainability of a community. So, bicycle-friendly communities are great places to live, work, and visit, and this isn't just about Minneapolis. So, if you've heard about Minneapolis being a very bike-friendly place, I think New Ulm is a very bike-friendly place. The streets are wide, lots of places to ride. We emphasize that bicycling is a simple solution to many of the challenges we face in our country, our state, and our communities. And to that end, I will share with you quickly some of my favorite survey results that are particularly relevant here. About three-quarters of Minnesotans think that bicycling and walking should be included in transportation projects where relevant. You know, no bike lanes in cornfields, or no bike trails in cornfields, but around town, maybe. More than half of Minnesotans bike at least occasionally. Minnesotans take somewhere between, somewhere around 90 million trips by bicycle a year, adding up to about 180 million miles. The bicycle industry in Minnesota contributes about 750 million to our economy and about 5,000 jobs. So, there are some, actually, there's some bicycle giants in Minnesota. Nothing compared to 3M and Target, but they're big industry. Bike events are responsible for 14 million in economic activity and another 150 jobs, so. And people, one of my favorite tourism ads a few years ago was a map of Minnesota, and a bicycle map of Minnesota, and the people who were riding stopped in New Ulm for a couple unexpected days of beer drinking and good food. So, people do visit here on bicycles. And this is one of the reasons why Alina's at the table, I think. Biking a couple miles three times a week reduces your risk of metabolic syndrome, the factors that lead to heart attacks and strokes, by nearly 50%. That is, that is a staggering number to me. And here's another one, doesn't apply to here, but bicycle commuters in the Twin Cities alone are responsible for saving hundreds of millions in healthcare costs. And one of my favorites, just last month, the Mayo Clinic released a study that said high-intensity bicycling workouts, cycling workouts, delay aging. So, I'm working on getting younger. Cindy Winters and the rest of the team will certainly tell you, applying for a Bike Friendly Community designation is not an easy task. Takes tremendous effort to gather all the information required and bring it to the right people, bring the right people to the table. So, special thanks to Cindy and the team for all their work. The League of American Bicyclists was really impressed with many aspects of New Ulm's efforts to become a world-class bicycle-friendly community, and I made particular note of the excellent ranking you got for bike education in the schools. The Bicycle Alliance of Minnesota was involved in doing a training for teachers here about two years ago, and I'm glad to see that they're doing a great job implementing that. So, you're gonna have a whole generation of kids that think that bicycling and walking is the way to get around town, so I'm glad you're planning for that. So, on behalf of the League of American Bicyclists, I'm pleased to present New Ulm with a Bronze Bike Friendly Community Award. Congratulations. The Bicycle Alliance of Minnesota and the League look forward to working with you to continue to make New Ulm a bike-friendly community, more bike-friendly community, so. And if you wouldn't mind, could I take a picture?
Sure.
Here, I'll stand up and hand this to you.
Charlie's hitting the rail.
Oh, I wanna be.
Stand up, Charlie. Come on, take.
There. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Greeley, for coming all the way down here. We appreciate. That's a long drive and a great award, so.
Well, you know, it's really important. I'm glad you're thinking about the future of your community in Minnesota.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will offer a motion to accept a bronze-level designation as a best bicycle-friendly community from the League of American Bicyclists.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you again.
Back to the Capitol.
Alright.
Is the other one you're gonna?
Okay, item 6F.
Six F.
A consider request of Barb Nelson to reduce the 2017 estimated market value for a partial number 001.370.005.01380, 3 Hazelwood Avenue. Did I get it right?
Yes. Yep. Angie's unable to be here tonight, so I'm stepping in for her, but she did go view the property right after our last meeting for the May 4th. She was up there on May 4th, and she did review the porch and different, and noticed that the, there was some issues with the interior finish with the porch. And also, there was a shed that had been removed since the last five years we were there. But there was also some garage finish that we did not have, so the change ended up being about $9. So, she's recommending no change in the value.
Okay, thank you. So, I guess it's up to the council if we want to accept this?
Maybe just for the people that are watching, we had a Board of Equalization where we take a look at property values, and this is one that we wanted a little bit more information on, so we requested the county staff to go back out and take a second look at this property that hadn't been looked at for five years, right?
Yeah, about five years, yeah.
There was a leak, and there was some damage, but it sounds like one improvement equaled out the area of concern, so I'm gonna go ahead and move that request, or excuse me, to deny the, let's see, how do we want to word this?
Accept the recommendation.
We're gonna...
Accept the recommendation.
I'm gonna accept the recommendation for no change to the 2017 market value.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on it? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thanks. Thank you.
Now, we'll go back to the beginning. Number 2A. Conduct a public hearing to consider requests of David Cranbeer Creative Concrete Specialties, New Ulm, Minnesota, for a noise variance for, to perform work on behalf of McDonald's Restaurant to use jackhammers during hours of 4:30 AM for two days and to remove and replace concrete to driveway.
Public hearing?
Public hearing, that's right. Sorry about that. Anybody like to be heard on it?
And we got nothing in writing from anybody?
I received nothing.
I heard nothing.
No calls.
No calls.
Entertainer motion?
I'm not seeing any comments or anything. I will move to close the public hearing and offer a resolution and waive the reading to close the public hearing and authorizing the noise variance permit for the business to accommodate the work performance on behalf of McDonald's Restaurant and remove, to remove and replace the drive-through driveway using a jackhammer for two consecutive days, weather permitting, during the hours of 4:30 AM for approximately 30 minutes to remove the concrete.
Second. We got a motion and a second. Offer resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? Seeing none. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 2B. Public hearing on the proposed 2017 surface reconstruction project. Steve, you want, you have anything on that one?
Yeah, Mr. President, thank you. This is the second project that was included in the 2017 recommended capital improvement plan. The public hearing on this evening is for 11 and a half blocks of what we call a surface reconstruction to be performed by city forces, the street department. We've sent out notices to approximately 96 property owners. I've received probably six or eight calls regarding the project, or the proposed project, and I have received no written comments regarding this matter.
So, you want, should we take them one by one?
Uh, it doesn't appear there's a whole bunch of people here, so it's up to you, Mr. President.
Won't take much here. Number one, State Street from 10 South Street to 15 South Street. Anybody like to be heard on that? Second one is 3rd South Street, Jefferson Street to Payne Street. 6th South Street, Washington Street to Franklin Street. 11th South Street, Broadway to German Street. 17th South, 17th North Street, Alley 165, north of Garden Street, north to Garden Street, sorry about that. And 17th North Street from Broadway to Minnesota Street. Anybody like to be heard? Not any of them. I don't believe anybody's gonna come forward to the mic, so I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, close the hearing, ordering in the 2017 surface reconstruction project, and authorize the street department to construct this project.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second. Offer resolution, waive the reading, close the hearing. Any more discussion? Seeing none. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 3A. Consider motion approving issuance of a lawful gambling permit for the New Ulm Area Catholic Schools to conduct raffle gambling.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, and that's for August, let's see.
7.
7, 2017, and also September 15, 2017. More discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 3B. Consider motion approving the issuance of a temporary on-sale 3.2% malt liquor license for Cathedral of Holy Trinity, and that is for June 25, 2017.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 3C. Consider motion approving issuance of a liquor license for a period beginning July 1, 2017, and ending 2000, or June 30, 2018.
I'll offer that motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Approve the liquor license for the period. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, last year, I believe I brought this up, and I'm not quite sure why. We got eight pages of Applebee's liquor violations all across the country. I'm not sure what that data does here tonight. I'd like to see some data of just strictly the New Ulm, city of New Ulm liquor violations. I don't think that my decision has any bearing what happens in another city, another state. So, I think it'd just save some office work, too, but there's probably 20 pages of liquor violations from Wisconsin and Michigan, and I don't think there's any bearing on today, unless there's some reason we have to have that.
It's all documentation they submit as part of their license renewal, so I think it just gets included in here.
So, they have to submit that as part of, like, Applebee's has required to submit that as part of eight pages. I mean, every Applebee's in the world has had a liquor violation we not know about.
Mr. President, Counselor, I think the problem is in the application process. The question is the owner, any possible violations. And if the owner is a corporate entity like Applebee's, they list their violations. We could have, you know, someone here who's got two bars, one in New Ulm and one in Mankato. It might be important to know what they're doing in Mankato. So, unless we're gonna change things and say, well, if you've got, you know, three places, we want to know about it, but not if you've got 50. I mean, and again, I don't think it's any more work for city staff.
It's just scanning in.
It just seemed like, it's like, why am I reading all this? It's just...
You decide to read is your business.
I read this stuff. There you go. So, is it considered part of their application, then? So, that's why we're getting, because it's part of the application process. It's not city staff digging this up and...
No, no.
Correct. I can live with it, I guess.
Even if it were just Minnesota, even if it were just Minnesota violations, I don't know. How do you, is it rewording a question on the application, or is it?
I don't mean to pick on Applebee's, but there's Big Trip and Cashwise and...
I believe it's a requirement that they submit all their violations from that business, as the city attorney reported. We had, you know, a few years back, I think we had one of the grocery stores, and they had South Dakota stores, they had Iowa stores.
Right.
It's just part of the process that they have to submit that information.
Alright, I'll live with it. It's a good thing we're not printing out paper, because then I would be more more crap.
Alright. Any concerns, questions?
Oh, new on here is the Sunday liquor license.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna ask that, too.
And I noticed there was some variation in, a little bit in the amount. Was I seeing it right?
Is that because of best practices, maybe?
It could be partially because of that, and then depending on what they're requesting the sale for, too, if it's...
200 or 150, 170.
It might be that.
So, did we, was that in our fee schedule, or did we?
Yes.
Okay. Just didn't recall that.
Anybody else?
So, Sunday liquor was included in our license, our license information for, that we're approving now, for the new Sunday liquor off sale.
Yeah, because we would approve those in 2016, right? Those fees, that fee schedule?
But that would go into effect.
Well, you've got two things. You've got the Sunday on-sale liquor.
Right.
And the new one is the Sunday off-sale liquor.
Correct.
And that...
So, we don't have that yet.
Doesn't go into effect until August 1st or something.
Oh, okay.
I think it's July 1st.
They don't have anything.
July 1st.
So, what do we need to do to get ready for that?
Well, they're on here, right?
That's all, is it all on sale, though?
Off sale.
Or would there not be a special license for Sunday?
Mr. President, Counselor, I think in the past, with respect to licensing the off-sale establishments, we've pretty much just followed state law. And so, what that means is there'd be a presumption that if they want to be open on Sundays, their license would also apply to that.
Okay, that makes sense.
Council hasn't addressed it. If you wanted to do something about the hours, you probably would have the ability to do that, otherwise the stores, their discretion, if they want to be open and how long they want to be open on Sundays, but otherwise, I'm sure there's some of them that plan to be open, and this license would apply to all six days, seven days of the week, so...
I don't think we want to meddle in that. I think we leave that up to the business owners, so...
Sounds good.
Thank you, that makes sense.
Yeah, on, on our list here, we don't have Sunday off-sale. It's not here.
It's just part of the off-sale license.
Oh, yeah.
On-sale is here.
On-sale, yeah, okay.
All right. Any more discussion? Seeing none, under data motion?
Yeah, I think we already did.
We did? All right. No more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Foes no, motion carries. Item four A, from the Safety Commission authorizing a pedestrian crosswalk sign pilot project at Fourth South and Payne Street and Fifth North and Washington Street.
President Schmitz, I'm kind of familiar with this proposal. I do not belong to the Safety Commission, but I do attend the Heart of New Ulm Commission meetings. Myself and the assist, excuse me, Assistant City Engineer are at those meetings. It has gone through the proper channels. It is a pilot program. It's not something they're asked for permanently. I myself think it is a good safety idea. We've talked about the Payne Street issues. We're all aware of Fifth North and Washington at, in the morning and when school is closing, it's quite the fiasco on that corner. So I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, to authorize a pedestrian crosswalk sign pilot project at Fourth South and Payne Street and Fi- Fifth North and Washington Street.
Second.
We got a motion and a second off the resolution, waived reading. Any more discussion?
Maybe for the public to just talk about what they're planning on doing, and whether Ms. Winters wants to talk about that, or, or you, or what's, what's...
Cindy?
What do you want to do with that intersection?
Mr. President, this was brought forward by the Heart of New Ulm as a, a way to encourage active transportation and provide a safer environment for pedestrians at, at particular crosswalks, and I think Cindy can speak to that as well.
Cindy Winters, Heart of New Ulm Project, yes. This came up to the Safe Roads to School group initially, that there were some concerns at the intersection of Fourth South and Payne Street. There have been some incidences of people running that stoplight at that intersection, especially since the buses dropped the kids off on Payne Street now. So the buses were pulling far enough ahead that people could no longer see the stop sign, so they were running the stop sign, so kids didn't, there wasn't a safe place for them to cross. Since that time, they have asked the buses to pull back farther, so they don't pull as close to the stop sign. But on walk-to-school day, there was a person that blew through the crosswalk while there were kids in the intersection walking to school. So, and then at North Fifth and Washington, that, that has been a concern, just the amount of traffic and the speed of traffic to let kids walk to New Ax, and that's been a concern of the schools themselves. So this, this is a pilot project to see if it will help allow, no, to notify motorists that they need to stop if there's a student or somebody standing at the intersection so that they can cross the street safely.
So there's some signs that are going to be going into...
In the middle of the street.
Middle of the street.
Mm-hmm, right, just before the crosswalk.
And they will be removed at snow removal times?
Correct, mm-hmm, yeah, they're not permanent installations at this time.
Will they ever be?
If it works.
It can be?
Mm-hmm, they can be.
Okay.
And the SHIP program, the statewide health improvement program, we have received a grant to purchase those. And so, and that, the SHIP program will pay for the signs, and then there is a in-kind donation that's required as a part of that, and that would be the installation by the city would qualify for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item four B, from the Safety Commission recommending support for the Heart of New Ulm curb extension pilot, pilot project at Fifth North and Washington Street.
Mr. President, this was another idea that was brought forth by the Heart of New Ulm. I'm not sure why Cindy went to sit down, because she should probably come back up. And I would assume that it's going to be in concert with the preceding agenda item.
Correct, so Cindy Winters, Heart of New Ulm Project, when we applied, we were not sure that we were going to get this grant. We received a grant from Blue Cross Blue Shield to do a test pilot, to do temporary curb extensions at the, the North Fifth and Washington intersections. And we're going to work with the police department to use their new traffic calming device to, to determine how many cars use that street prior to doing the curb extensions, and see what their average speed is, and then when the curb extensions are up, we're going to work with the police department again, and they're going to have their traffic calming device there to see if it helped to slow traffic, so that it's safer for the kids to walk and bike to school. So it's, it'll be a week-long project. Towards the end of September, we don't have exact dates yet, but we're working with the New Ulm area Catholic schools to determine what a, what a good week is to test this.
And is this just strictly cones that they're extending the curb with, or how are they extending it?
We're going to do cones, and then we're also going to do some temporary planters, because we did a similar project when the, we were testing the high school, what used to be the high school, and people were weaving in and out of the cones, so it didn't really work, so we need to fill that curb extension with more items to prevent people from weaving in and out of the cones.
Or police officers.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, to authorize the Heart of New Ulm to conduct the curb extension pilot project at Fifth North and Washington Street.
Second.
We got a motion and a second off the resolution, waived reading. Any more discussion? Seeing none, finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item four C, from the Safety Commission recommending establishment of charrel route on First South Street from existing recreational trail Riverside Park, as requested by the Riverfront Development Advocacy Group. Now, Cindy? Oh, Tony?
Yeah, either one of us.
Well, we'll take Tony. We should have somebody that lives in that area.
Mr. President, I just mentioned this was an issue that was brought forward to the Safety Commission, requesting that they recommend to the city council that charrels be painted from the existing trail on First South, across the railroad tracks, across Valley, down to Front Street and the Riverside Park.
Thank you. Tony Miller, three twenty-seven South Valley, Goose Towner. We, I'm a member of the Riverfront Development Advocacy, Advocacy Group. I'm a kind of a facilitator, but we've decided to work with a, to start a, one of the, one of our projects is going to be to get more access to and from Riverside Park and the bike trail. And I'm happy to say George did a wonderful job of setting something up for this, and one of the aspects of this project is to put charrels from First, on First South Street from the bike, from the bike trail to Riverside Park. And along with some signs, putting some signage up there, so people could ride bike down from the bike trail and actually have access to Riverside Park and at least have the charrels on the road for that. That's about all I can tell you about it, except I understand that one of the suggestions was to have this done at the same time that we have other charrels put in, in other parts of the city, is that correct? So that we would have, when the ones on Front Street are done, that this, this one could be put in as well. And I think it's a good idea. We are certainly in favor. The advocacy group has been doing a lot of, a lot of projects, and this is probably the best project for us to get started and have actually have tangible results that we can see. So that's kind of what we're working with. If there's any other questions, that's, I wasn't prepared to speak, so I'll do the best that I can, if there's any questions.
I just have one question. Are you going to have a sign there as well? I know there's going to be the charrels, but for people that aren't familiar with New Ulm, are they going to know that that is the way to the river?
Yes, correct me if I'm wrong, George, but our plan is to have a sign right at the bike trail, First, First South and Bike Trail, and then right at Riverside Park. And they would explain, at the bike trail, they would explain what's available at Riverside Park, and then on the other, on the other way, it would be, Riverside Park would show that the bike trail is, is available, so people could transport back and forth. Dave was a part, is also a part of the advocacy group, so Dave, Counselor Christian is a part of it, so it's, it's definitely something that we can get started. I think it would, it would be a good place for us to get, to show some tangible result, like I said before.
As a former Goose Towner, I will offer a resolution, waive the reading, to establish a charrel route on First South Street from the existing recreational trail to Riverside Park.
Second.
We have a motion and a second off the resolution, waived reading. Any more discussion? Seeing none, finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item five A, consider resolution accepting the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen Minnesota Green Corp host site grant award for an urban forestry member and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement with the state of Minnesota. Tom, you're standing there, you must want to say something.
Thank you, President Schmitz and counselors. We have been awarded a host site for year number two. This is our present, presently, we're in the first year of a Minnesota Green Corp arrangement through the Pollution Control Agency, which is an AmeriCorps program, to help us with our urban forestry initiatives. So I recommend, along with the Tree Commission, recommending that you authorize the city manager to sign an agreement for a second year funded by AmeriCorps for urban forestry. We've had a very good first year. The first year goes until mid-August, so we're not completed yet, and the next program will be September through August of eighteen.
I'm going to offer that resolution, waive the reading.
Second.
We got a motion and a second off the resolution, waived reading. Any more discussion?
Just one question, is it the same person, then, that would remain here, or do we get a new, a new individual that would be?
We do not know yet for sure. Right now, there's a recruitment phase happening that you can access through the PCA website, the Green Corp website, and so applicants will be applying. Our present applicant is eligible to reapply, and he's expressed interest in reapplying, so there's a great possibility we won't have a learning curve with a new member, and so we're hopeful that Shane Omera will continue for a second year in New Ulm.
That would be good. Can you, we, can you request that by any chance, or is, do we have any, any way of putting our input in, saying we want him to return, or is that just through the whole application process that?
I will be sending that information up to the Pollution Control Agency, although they will be accepting all applicants and be reviewing those against each other. So we won't know for certain until that process is complete in the next couple of months.
Okay.
Anybody else? Seeing nothing? Finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item five B, consider motion to approve the plans and specification and advertise, and advertise the city manager to ad, authorize, sorry about that, now it comes out, authorize the city manager to advertise for bids for the city hall interior lighting replacement and security updates, and submit an application to, for OSHA grant for security updates.
Yeah, Mr. President, city counselors, we've been talking about this. We included it in the budget, and this is probably going on for two years after the League of Minnesota Cities had a regional meeting. They reinforced it at the last meeting, and this is, we're getting close to finalizing that project.
With that said, I'll motion to approve the plans and specification, authorize the city manager to advertise for bids for the city hall interior lighting replacement and security updates, and submit an application for an OSHA grant for the security update.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any more discussion?
I, like I said, we've been talking about this for a year and a half, probably, I think, when it first came to light, and I think there's nothing more important than making sure our staff are safe in their duties, so I strongly support this.
Okay. No more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes no, motion carries. We'll go to item six C. Consider a motion to receive and order filed the two thousand sixteen survey of public services and performance measurements report. Brian, you got a little bit on that?
Yeah, the material that has been submitted to you is the results of the survey that we performed after the first of the year. We had a very good return on surveys. Sent out three hundred surveys, seventy-five in each ward, and we received a hundred and seventy-one back at City Hall, which is fifty-seven percent return rate, which is up from last year. Just to note, I think North Mankato was down into the twenties or something like that on their survey return results, just in today's paper. So we are, we have an active citizenry who actually wants to let the city council know about the services that they receive, and how happy they are about them, or how unhappy they are about them. Generally, it's the same format as before. You've got the performance measures report, you got the condensed city survey by ward, you got the city survey item averages by ward, the survey scale count by citywide, and then count by ward one through four, and then survey comments. As I noted, probably the more interesting part are the comments submitted by the residents, and those will be discussed, they'll be sorted out between the city and the PUC, and we'll be discussing them over the next month or two as we prepare the budgets for two thousand eighteen. We, again, ranked, you know, about three and a half to, you know, four and a half on most of the scores, so we are, you know, doing above average, and overall satisfaction is fairly consistent. If you look at the individual numbers of, let's say, police service, and then you look at the respondents' overall perspective of satisfaction of the community, they're really close when you average all those things out. So basically, what that means is there may be a few things that they're taking into account, because their overall satisfaction was higher than their average, but all that really means, I think, is there are other things in the community that make them happy to receive those, that quality of services. So we only rate, you know, the thirteen or fourteen services. There are other things they like about the community, too. So it's fairly consistent with last year. Some departments that were up went down, and some that were down went up, and so the variable wasn't a whole lot from year to year, and based, now that we've got six years of information, I don't know that, I don't know that I can put too much weight on annual adjustment of point oh two, you know? It went down point oh two, or it went up point oh two. That's so minor that it's really stayed the same. So what we'll be looking at is the much more severe adjustments. If it goes down a half a percent or more, then that's something that we want to look at. So I'm, I'm pretty happy with the results, to be quite honest, that we got none that are, are considered poor. We do have, you know, one ward that may score lower than the other three wards, and I think last year it was a different ward, and this year it's another ward that scored a little bit lower. It's just luck of the draw of who answered the survey. What we'll do after this is we'll send that to the state of Minnesota, and they'll put it in the, on their website of all the cities and counties that do the satisfaction survey, and then we will have qualified for approximately eighteen hundred dollars that funds this survey. It's, it's enough to cover the cost, so I think it's, it's still worthy. I know there were some cities that did not do this right away, six years ago, that are currently doing it now, and so I think it's, it's more acceptable. I think people want to know, how are we doing, and how can we make adjustments in the budget to make our services better? So that's what the whole purpose of this is. Citizen input. Any questions? Glad to answer more, but I'm happy to provide this information, and the results kind of speak for themselves. Glad to answer more, but I'm happy to provide this information, and the results kind of speak for themselves.
Yeah, Mr. President, I, last year, I kind of read some of the comments into the record, and I'd like to do the same thing. Because there's some really good things in here that, as Brian talked about. Our top categories, as Brian mentioned, was certainly the police, the fire department, the library, and people like the police department are the three highest. The three areas where they were rated the lowest by all of our wards was the condition of our city streets and our cable access channel. That was also a low one last year, too, that we were, started to do some work on, and then we lost the chair. So we, we certainly got some work to do in that area. But for comments, I'd like to just, if you can just bear with me a few minutes here to talk about some of the good things. I'll hit some of the higher areas first, and then I'll talk about areas either concern or comments that people had. And some of these are, I love New Ulm, I wouldn't live anywhere else. When I first moved here, I knew that our children could come home at any hour and always be safe. We are pleased as citizens of the passing of renew, and what those dollars will keep track to our families and our community. Family-friendly, great place to live. We love Vogel Arena. City staff have been responsive and helpful and respective, respective to all requests for information. Quality and variety of services are good. I love New Ulm the way it is, neat and clean, happy to call it home. New Ulm's a lovely city and a great place to live. I'm glad to be a citizen of New Ulm. I love the New Cat Station. Continued support of Highway 14 and 15 corridor is important to New Ulm's future. A very good city to live and work in. I love New Ulm, keep up the good work. New Ulm compares favorably with my hometown of Hutchinson. I volunteer at, at the Chamber, we get lots of compliments of our German city, clean and beautiful. I like the New Cat music and church. Thanks for wanting input. Quick response time by Police Department makes me write this. Fire trucks are in excellent shape, streets all over are good. Snow plowing in the morning helps everybody get around, parks are in good shape, libraries in good shape. The community has a lot to offer. I believe it would take extraordinary efforts to reach, reach an excellent level. So my fours are very good. New Ulm's a clean city, clean city. New Ulm's a great city to live in, love the city, great place to live. The baseball fields in town get A-plus attention. The decoration of fire hydrants, plants, and flowers along Minnesota Street are a nice touch. New Ulm Police Department are exceptional, community-oriented officers assisting at medical emergencies, and overall professionalism make them number one. New Ulm Fire Department also outstanding, love the community involvement. Now on to some comments that people thought we should look at, think about. Rental properties need more inspection by the city. And again, I'm not reading all of them, I'm just picking some out that I, I thought would be important. We'd like to see the, see that a family could pay their utility bills using a credit card. The plowing isn't good as it used to be, utilities are high. Need more variety in our community access programming. Many priorities are, properties are allowed to continue in conditions that don't meet city code. Snow plowing is bad downtown, we've heard that one for quite a while. I would love to see some lighting on the bike trail. This was a new one that I hadn't seen before, to make it more feel safer and increase the ability to use in an evening hours. I would like to include that New Ulm utility rates in New Ulm are too high and need improvement. New Ulm's doing a fine job, with the exception of the walking track of Vogel Arena. It's extremely dangerous while walking, and people playing basketball. It isn't uncommon to get hit by balls and by people. Ouch. Get rid of perpetual garage sales, it makes Broadway look terrible. Snow removal needs improvement. Service for electricity and gas is good, but very, very expensive. Utilities are extremely high, electricity and utilities are high. Get a Shopko, a Target, and a Kmart, and a Culvers, and a Harby's, and a Hardee's, we have a Hardee's. Marco Platt's Mall bathrooms are a big mess, owner needs to upgrade. City streets need improvement. I have a feeling our city street grades are probably going to be really low next year with all the construction on Broadway, plus our own construction, but we'll see what happens. This one we have talked a few years ago about, the city needs to buy a vacuum machine to pick up leaves in the fall. For old people, not everyone has a truck and a trailer to haul leaves to the compost site. The ordinance on deer feeding needs to be enforced. Cottonwood Street, especially the section just west of Broadway, is sorely neglected. Hospital Hill is terrible. Need to enforce the junk vehicles. We have many pub, public employees, parks, and police officers. We should downsize our government and also look at selling our PUC. And need more income, low-income housing, and kiddie pools cost too much. So that's the comments from, some of the comments from the public, good, bad, and in-between.
There was a comment that you missed, that I, it caught my eye. During Halloween, since State Street is so busy, it would be nice and safer for kids if they would block off the side streets. Police do a very good job of patrolling. I don't have a very good counter, but I believe last year, there was about 77 times when they walked past my house. Now maybe, and it wasn't just my house, it was that whole stretch that they're constantly walking and patrolling. And they're, they're talking to the kids while they're out there, they're talking to the parents, thanking the parents to be with them, to be with the kids. By blocking off some of those side streets, I'd hate to see a fire about two houses away from mine, and the fire truck couldn't get there because they were blocked off, or kids were running through. So, you know, there's six of one, there's half dozen of the other. The plowing of Minnesota Street snow, I think we have done a pretty good job with that because if we just spend all of our time plowing Minnesota Street, Walmart and Kmart, oops, not Kmart, Walmart and Menards and some of those businesses that are, have to plow their own parking lot, they're going to be a little upset, too. So I think it's kind of a half, a pretty good mix. We get part of the snow off of Minnesota Street, not all of it, but we get some of it off. But we also get the residential areas opened up so that we can get to work, so we can get downtown.
I was kind of surprised at the junk on property topic came up as much as it did. It was pretty popular two years ago, and then last year, we had law enforcement go out and, and inspect all the properties. And I know we cleaned up some properties, but maybe we need to do that again, I don't know.
Well, my concern is, you know, seeing here that, you know, it says enforce junk vehicles on property. You know, as long as they buy tabs, they're good. So I think we may have to start thinking about adjusting our ordinance in the city. I mean, and say if it's sitting there, you know, have defined parking, maybe. You know, if there's a spot, not that you're parking a motorhome or a boat in your front yard. You know, you've got to have a defined curb cut, you know, something to consider it on the line, you know. And then one of the other comments on here, I just want to add, it said, there are some substandard houses, houses and businesses around the town. What can we do, you know, to encourage cleanup? You know, so there again, I'm wondering if we need to start thinking about minimum maintenance ordinances, you know, and-
Blight-type ordinance?
Correct. You know. You know, we send letters out and, you know, some things, it just seems like it takes forever to get them cleaned up. But I've been on here now for three years and reviewing these, you know, these are still comments that still keep coming up with the junk vehicles and things of that nature.
I would agree, I'd certainly like to see something in that area because we, we all have them in our wards, we all have those homes.
I don't know if Roger would have any in light on this, that if we could enforce something like this?
Mr. President, Counselor, I think the biggest concern you have is trying to define it. I know the Chambers brings this up periodically, but one person's rustic dwelling is another person's shack. You know, it's really, very hard to define it, so.
But it can be, and we have seen them in other cities. I don't know how well they're enforced, I don't know how well it's, how well it works, I don't know.
I mean, is it possible to look at some other alternatives, maybe, for the vehicles of that nature?
It'd be the same thing, you know, as far as, I mean, there's some, I know, where I live, there are people who park their very big pontoon by one home. But, you know, people have done it, they don't have a place to store it, they've done it for years. And it's, it's a decision the council can make if you don't want those types of vehicles parked, you know, in front of homes. So you've got the right to amend the ordinance to provide for that. It's a little harder with the junk cars because as long as they're legal and they're, they've got registration, it's no different than a 2017 Cadillac. I mean, it's, they're entitled to park it as long as it's legally parked.
We'd have to get rid of ours, Dave.
You know, I agree with what Counselor Mack, I, I used to be in that part of enforcement. It is really tough, I mean, a licensed operable vehicle. You can have a rust bucket to beat all heck, well, guess what? He's paying the same license, there's not a lot you can do. And, and one of the problems we had in the past was, I believe the list is still, the top 10 homes, I could still name them today, are still in existence in New Ulm. But as Roger said, it's really tough, the way the court of law looks at it, your home is your castle. It took the city of New Ulm at one time with all the proper channels, medical staff, Department of Health, two years to get a house tore down in New Ulm. People have that right to appeal, people have, it's really tough to do. I mean, even the proper channels, it can take a long time to correct those. It's just a tough one to do and takes a lot of staff hours.
And probably the, the topic that we seem to hear the most on this is the public utility, high rates. And I know there's Public Utilities Commission, which sits at a different date and time than us, and has the authority over the utilities. However, it's constantly an issue, it's constantly brought up. I've hosted a Hot Topic Breakfast on, on this five, six years ago with businesses. And I, and I'm glad to hear that utilities are going to hear these comments because I really think that they need to step up and look at, look at this issue more in-depth and come up with some solutions. We know about that million-dollar overpayment and, or, I, I just hope that they do something to help change that perception and reality that we have high utilities in this community.
Brian, did we not get, all of us get an email of a rating between a whole bunch of cities? And basically, New Ulm was in the middle?
Oh, no, it wasn't, Mayor. It's in the top three of, of the electricity area.
Yep.
Gas and, and water, yes, that ranged to right about in the middle.
Okay.
But not the electricity. Electricity was in the top three on every scale out of 14, I believe it was 14 different cities. I happened to print it out, so I had brought it, so I, people want to look at it. It, it's high, it's, it's really high. Roger?
I was just, Mr. President, Counselor Schultz, I understand it, the utilities in town, too. One of the, I think one of the questions on the utility is we're committed to a long-term contract.
Sure.
So there really isn't much we can do on that. I think the, the PUC and the, you know, Mr. Rossi and staff continue to try and find ways to reduce those costs there. Got the long-term planning, your power commission continues to meet, and that committee, so they are working on it. I think they're cognizant of it.
And I appreciate that. I, I just know that that's something we all hear as councilors everywhere we go. You got the business people are saying we can't continue to pay these electric rates, they don't compare with cities our size. I, I just think that they need to keep digging and keep looking at alternatives. And, and I don't sit on that commission, so I, it's hard for me to, to say, yeah, you guys need to fix this. But I do think that they need to know that we're the ones that are hearing, and they're not the elected officials, we are. And we're the ones that hear the complaints and the, from the business folks and our, and our private folks that are saying, these bills are getting so high for some people, they can't be paid. Especially people that are on, on fixed incomes, so I, and I, and I know they take it seriously. I just, I'm going to give them a little push to keep working on it.
And I think they, as, as the city attorney pointed out, the contracts have a lot to do with, with what we can charge. But to counterbalance that, you know, when we do the budget time, there's a lot of people think our, our taxes are high, too. And we justify that by providing a level of service that, whether it's recreation, or police, or fire department, and say, the quality of your life is greater in New Ulm than it is in other cities that, that when you walk through or drive through their community, the roads are worse than ours, you know. So if you look at the last probably, you know, 15, 16 years, you'll see that there's been tremendous effort put into reducing and keeping the rates as low as possible in all the areas. And I believe in, I think it was in gas, we haven't had a rate increase for nine years. I did one of them, you know, and, and one was five years. So it's not like they're going up every year. We're actually doing a very good job on the utilities. And the other utilities are actually catching up to us. Now, we are high in, in electric, and if you look at, let's just say Cortland. A couple of years ago, there was a car that ran into a light pole, and they, they had, electricity was out in their community for two days. They don't have backup electricity systems like New Ulm does. So we go off 15 minutes, we can have our generators up and running, and Kraft and 3M can still continue to work. That comes at a cost, and sometimes people forget about that. We have a backup system. And so it's more than just my costs are higher, it's what do you get for that service? We've got the lowest SADY, CADI, and SAFI ratings, you know, in, in, in all of the areas that we're looking at. And for those that don't know what those, that acronym stand for, it's basically how long your power outage is per residence or per utility or, you know, per year. And you look at those ratios, and we do pretty good. I mean, we're minuscule compared to Excel Energy. Now, there's a reason for that. Excel Energy covers so much area that when thunderstorms come through and trees get knocked over, you know, they have power outages.
And I understand that, I know social media blew up about that million-dollar overcharge, and, and people wanted rebates, and people wanted... And I just hope that Public Utilities is very transparent with what they're doing with, and I, and I know they've already made a statement that it's going to go into an account that's going to help future costs, but I, I just hope they're very transparent about how that's going to happen. But are there more of those things going on that we don't know about? I don't, I don't know, I'm just saying, I hope they're banging on all those doors, taking a look at, at those items so that our citizens are being billed correctly. And if there's places to cut, then we need to cut, so just...
Yeah, the, the PUC hasn't even had that on their agenda to decide what they want to do with that, that's, you know, so-
But I hope that they are very public when they make those decisions. And, and even if they want a working session with us, I'd be very open to that. So we can have a more of a public, open meeting about what's going on, too.
I guess, I, I kind of want to jump in here a little bit, just because I work in that utility field. So I see many other utilities, and I see our utility. And when I worked down there, we were the highest on that list. So I think the utility has done a great job in keeping those rates steady. As you can see, we've moved down, we're not the top anymore, we're in the upper part. I believe electric rates probably hasn't had an increase for like five years, if I, if I remember right. So they are working very hard. And I'm on, I sit on that long-term power committee, and they are working hard to maintain those rates. And part of it is the, the purchase contract that we're in right now. Their rates are, what we're purchasing is high, and you're, we're locked into that contract, and they're starting to look at alternatives.
So with that, Counselor Fisher, are we buying too long a rates? I mean, we're just going, are we buying too, I mean, those are just questions I would-
Too long, too long a contract?
Too long a contracts, excuse me.
No, I think, I think the contract length was, was appropriate. I mean, I look at other utilities in there in 30, 40-year contracts.
Oh, wow.
You know, so I don't think that that was, I think it was the timing and the way, how that industry and how our power supplier is, is running. So I think that, I see it a little bit different, I guess, than you do. And I, I hear businesses saying that, some large businesses saying that they're comfortable that the rates have maintained, and the other utilities are catching up. And I do see other utilities having just as high rates as we are, and they are going up. So I think maybe there's some education, maybe that needs to be done.
And that's what we did like five years ago, I know we had, Matt Rossi was assistant back then and did a really nice job at Hot Topics explaining where all that was at. Maybe it's time to do something like that again.
Yeah. And I think, you know, as far as that large sum of money that, that, I think they knew that that was happening, so they weren't charging the ratepayers, is my understanding. They weren't charging them, so they were taking it out of reserves. So maybe some education needs to be done on that. So it's not like the regular customer is being charged any additional, and then we're keeping that money. So they were taking it out of reserves, so it's just going to go back to- it out of reserves, so it's just gonna go back to replenish those reserves, is my understanding. But, so education, I think, is, is a big piece of it.
I agree with you, that's one of the comments I was gonna make at the end here. There's a lot of comments within that survey that I think we, as a city, whether it's department heads, whatever, because it all pertains to different people, when we do these little letters that we put in the paper and stuff, explaining what we're doing, whether it's library, or gas, or water, whoever, explain some of the things. I think we have a tendency not to pat ourselves on the back, and yet we don't try to explain to the people what's really going on, and I think we need to let the public really know what's happening, good or bad, you know? And we can take all the comments out of there you want, whether it's the streets or whatever, but I think on the overhaul, the survey was very good. I think we should pat a lot of people on the back. I think this, I've heard a lot of comments, not based on the survey, for snow removal in this town, how the people come up, they'll say, I can't believe it, the plows are out at four in the morning, when I go to 3M at six o'clock, my street's plowed, I can get there, I don't have to worry, you know? Maybe I have to shovel my driveway at the end, but no, I've heard nothing but good comments, and I think...
And we didn't have as much snow this year, so we didn't get as...
No, but it's different years, we did a good job.
Yeah, you're right, yeah. The snow removal comments were really bad a few years ago.
Mm-hmm. But I think that Lisa hit it on the head, I think education, we need to spend more time, and I think we talked about it on the council, too, educate the public, we really need to...
And I think the articles that Brian has been doing in the paper have really helped, and maybe the utility could maybe jump in and do something on how they're gonna allocate that money, or how they're gonna, or what, you know, maybe how that all came about, and how it maybe wasn't charged directly to the customer.
And then, yeah, we gotta remember the newspapers only hitting one small slice of audience, and we have other media opportunities to get it out to different age groups, and...
Yeah, which brings me back to the survey now. This is available online on the website?
Yeah, once we send it into the state, we'll put it on our website, so people can access it from the state auditor's website, and they'll also be able to access it from ours.
And will they have some hard copies at the library? I, I thought that they did in the past, but no?
Yeah, I can't remember, and we didn't plan on it, but...
Never have?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I'm, with that, I think we'll move this on, and I'll order this survey be received and filed in accordance to the RBA.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, receive an order filed, any more discussion? See a nun? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes, no, motion carries. Item 6G, consider motion confirming the appointment of Brian's service to the sister city commission.
I'll move it.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes, no, motion carries. Item 6E, consider motion confirming the appointment of Tom Keenan to the Monument and Cemetery Commission.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes, no, motion carries. Item 6G, consider resolution accepting donations and memorials to the New Ulm Public Library.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second, offer resolution, waive the reading, any more discussion? See a nun? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President, President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 6I, consider resolution approving the temporary construction easement for Carmike Cinema Incorporated to construct a retaining wall structure adjacent to the theater building at First North and German Street.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, approving the temporary construction easement with Carmike Cinema to reconstruct the retaining wall.
Second.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second, offer resolution, waive the reading, any more discussion? See a nun? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 6J, consider resolution to accept donations offered to the City and Park Recreation Department for identified purposes.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, to accept the following donations: $500 from Dietrich Specialties, $250 from State Farm, Bob Webb Agency, $500 from Gag Sheet Metal, Gog Sheet Metal, $100 from Mayday Motors, $250 from Bank Midwest, $483 from 3M Community Giving Team, $250 from Lareway Roofing, $250 from New Ulm Chamber of Commerce, and our German Park Paver Walkway, $100 from Karanoff. Thank you to all.
Thank you. Mayor, you're busy.
Yep.
All right.
We got a second.
Need a second.
All right. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 6K, consider a motion to request the purchase of software for the facility dude for the facilities maintenance program data gathering. Sounds like a dude.
Yeah, this is, you know, obviously an, an extension from the facility maintenance position that the city council authorized, and we just filled, this is creating the, the data bank of all of our buildings, ages, electric, you know, HVACs, putting all that information, and then setting up a plan as to maintaining those pieces of equipment, you know, based on all the square footages and the different departments and the different buildings that they have, it, you know, it's a, you know, reasonable, reasonably, you know, large number, but per building, it's not, it's not a large, large number. So would recommend that we buy the program for seventy-eight hundred dollars and get the data mined and collected and put into the program so that we can carry this thing forward.
Well, I know, I'm very familiar with wanting to go after this type of program. In years past, either departments or staff members, you know, we do a lot of requesting on, uh, let's have all of our roofs studied, we pay roof spec, twenty thousand dollars. They're gonna tell us how many years we have left on roofs and whatnot. By the initial hit with this, the twenty-three thousand, divvying it out between all the buildings, after that, I really believe it's gonna be a cost saver and a big help to the council on future budgeting. So no other discussion, I'll, to accept the request to purchase software from the facility, facility dude for the facilities maintenance program and data gathering.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any more discussion?
It's quite the name of a company, Facility Dude. I had to, I had to have a raised eyebrow and read that twice.
No more discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes, no, motion carries. Item 6L, consider a motion authorizing staff to submit an application to the leg, legacy grant to secure the request or proposal to the study needed for Herman Hanyman statue base.
I'm gonna offer that motion, but I wanna hear a little bit more about it, too.
Second.
We got a motion and a second? Does Elwood wanna talk about it?
Do you wanna talk about that at all?
Since you, you wrote a bunch of...
Of course he does. Even Tom might come up.
Elwood Zabel Building Official, President Schmitz, Council, we've been having an ongoing issue with Herman base with moisture infiltration, pieces falling off. We had just recently, here the last couple weeks, pieces that had fallen off the upper dome onto the second level, that we closed down Herman for a while to have an engineer come in and do a quick study and see if it's structurally sound and what was coming off, and that was just some infill of, around some I-beams that had fallen off, but what we're looking here is to start the process to do a long-term fix on Herman, and come in and do a structural, historical structural study of Herman, and to see where we need the fixes of it and what needs repaired.
Because that base is basically starting to clump off.
Uh, the base was, yeah, the, what you see on the base is product called gunite, and that was put on in, I've heard from as early as the late forties, early fifties, to the seventies, I know in ninety-eight, ninety-nine, they did some repairs on Herman, there were spots then that were taken off and reapplied with this gunite. Underneath that gunite is limestone, the original base.
Okay.
We don't know what's happening to that being that's been covered up for so many years, and just the structure integrity of the whole, whole base itself.
So this study is basically gonna tell us how to fix it, so it's, it'll last another forty, fifty years, right?
Or longer. That's what we're, that's what we're coming in, we're gonna, it's gonna probably entail some destructive investigation on the monument itself, on the base, to get into the interior and see what's happening, so they can determine what, what needs to be done.
So once that study happens, and they say, all right, you need to do X, Y, and Z, and that's a cost of a hundred thousand dollars, two hundred thousand, whatever it might be, where, where do we look to for funds for that?
And we'll be back to the, going back to the legacy grants, and trying to apply for those again.
And is that...
It could be bonding from the state, it could be, you know, sources not yet determined.
Okay, but, okay, so probably not local funds, or at least not much?
There's probably gonna be some local funds involved in it, but state bonding could be an option, the legacy funds could be an option.
Sure, I think, when I saw legacy, I was like, yes, this is perfect, this is exactly what that money's intended for, so I, I hope that work comes through, so, good, thank you.
Thank you. Motion authorize staff to submit an application for legacy grant to secure request for proposals? Oh, you got one?
We got one already, we got it, unless you wanna do it twice, it's good.
All right. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes, no, motion carries. Item 6M, consider resolution to grant a public right-of-way license to Mike Crowe Construction Incorporated for construction of a new home at 1401 Eleventh North Street and 1426 Maplewood Street for the period of May 5th through whatever, nineteen, 2017. Does he have a date that he really wants?
Yeah, you received a correspondence that was placed at your, at your chair, you'll note that one of the locations...
Up to four months, huh?
The second location is 1426 Maplewood, they think they have about two months, and the 1401 Eleventh North Street, they'd like to have up to four months.
I don't have any problem with this, I'm gonna offer the resolution, waive the reading.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, offer resolution, waive the reading, any more discussion? See a nun? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. But no more business, meeting adjourned.